Welcome to the May 28, 2024 City Council Meeting. Start with a prayer. Dear God, today's session opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for the direction which lead our city to be strong and unified. We continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted to this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen.
To the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rock.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Ten present.
Moment of silence, Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Arthur John Feneris, beloved husband of Christine Sigalos Feneris, with whom he enjoyed 53 years of marriage. Arthur was a graduate of Lowell High School and attended Bentley University. He served in the United States Air Force during the Cuban crisis. Arthur was the owner and operator of four very successful pizza and sub shops in Lowell for a number of decades. Johnny's Pizza on University Avenue, Johnny's Pizza on Chemsford Street, Campus Restaurant and Campus Sub Shop on University Avenue. Arthur was also the owner of Universal Apartments on University Avenue and owned several properties in the area. Arthur was an active member of the Transfiguration Greek Orthodox Church in Lowell, where he served as past president and vice president of the parish council. Arthur had also served as chairman of the new building project and chaired many Greek festivals beginning in the 1970s. He absolutely loved selling raffle tickets to support the church. He was a recipient of the Clergy Laity Award along with his wife Christine for all of their efforts to support the church. Arthur was a member of the Heifah, Chapter 102 of Lowell, and he was a member of the Duville Manor Men's Guild. In addition to his loving wife Christine, Arthur leaves his sons John A. Feneris and Jason J. Feneris. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and his many friends. He will be truly missed. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Any others? Mr. Clerk, Doc Gitchin, please.
Section 2, Mayor's Business, 2.1, Communication/Remote Zoom Participation. The motion accepted and filed by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Dakota. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, Maintenance of the City Council Regular Meeting, May 21st. City Citizens Subcommittee, May 23rd, for acceptance by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. About being seven o'clock, head to Section 5, City Council Motions. 5.1, Counselor Noon requests City Manager provide the council with a report on the feasibility of a regional waste and recycling program with other communities in the Marimac Valley to achieve cost savings, provide service improvements. Seconded by Counselor Janess. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the recycle, waste and recycle contract is coming up in December. I know that we, the administration is probably starting work already around, you know, renewing that contract. So, maybe opportunity just to make sure that, you know, just to make waste and recycle more convenient and cost-effective. It's also, you know, efficient, you know, maybe by adding other city and town into this contract as a bundle. So, just asking for, to, you know, explore that opportunity, if there is an opportunity out there. That's all.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 5.2, Counselor Noon, requests City Manager to provide a report on existing educational programs by the Solid Waste and Recycling Division of the DPW to Lowell Public Schools and to the residents of recycling sustainability efforts, and to explore feasibility of additional programs with the schools and the community. Seconded by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the previous directors on, you know, waste and recycle have done that already in the past. We just haven't, you know, continued that. It need to be an ongoing education so that, you know, young people, you know, engage in a sustainable behavior, you know, take it from, you know, the classroom outside to home. And also information that, you know, they learn at school, go to home. And this way, maybe this way, that we will address at least some of the issue that we have with regard to contaminating, that we pay every year, you know, quarter million to half a million dollar every year for that contamination. So, this is an opportunity to continue what we left off, education in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 6, Communications from the City Manager, 6.1, Motion Response A, Syringe Exchange. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Ms. Golden for the report. I think it's a little shy of what I was looking for. I appreciate the information provided. I think this is an opportunity to dive a little bit deeper in on the situation that we're all aware is a problem. You know, some of the things that I've seen is the CDC guidelines on state-by-state breakdown. And I think I'd like to explore more what local control options legally we would be able to have with these syringe exchange programs. Again, I'm speaking about syringe exchange, and it seems like a lot of it is operating more like a syringe distribution with no exchange mechanism involved. So, I'd like to refer this to the Substance Abuse Subcommittee, please, for further discussion.
By Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Getchea. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 6.1B, Chemsford Street Paving Request, Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank the administration for getting the work that was needed at that time done so expeditiously. I am looking forward to seeing the project completed by National Grid. And thank you for the report.
Motion Response C, Localized Paving, Counselor Leahy. Not being here, anybody have any comments on that? Moving on to D, Motion Response, Meadowcroft Street, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, and just thank you for this thorough report. I'm glad to see that there's some work that's going to happen to the street. It's definitely in disrepair, and I just appreciate the work. Thank you.
Yes, moving on. Motion Response E, Reservoir Street Erosion Repair Update, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Commissioner St. Seer and the city engineer. Pretty thorough response. I think if we're having problems with the repairs that were done, maybe the stone we used in those washout areas is too small, so I hope that they can reassess and continue the work needed. Thank you.
Moving on, Motion Response F, Rockdale Ave, Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Ting, city engineer. A great report, and if you could explain for people at home what is the reverse crown? I know I'd look it up, but for the people who at home, who, especially the family who live there, they file, they asked me to file the motion.
Typically, the way we come to the middle, we have the center and the higher, and the pitch, the pitch. Reverse crown is just a possibility. So, the crown actually, the center will become the whole point.
Right.
It will be narrow.
Right.
Typically, the kind of this in the middle, we have the cover, and we have the pitch facing from the side.
Yep.
From the top, here, and coming down to the edge, and then pull along.
Right.
When you reverse, it does a little bit edge, and goes this.
Right.
So, down the middle.
Right.
And that's why it's sometimes caused the joint to split.
Right.
When you water it right through.
Right.
That's the difference.
That's what the situation right now. If you travel on Rockdale Ave from Powell Street, beginning, you have the picture where the catch basin is. It's really kind of, that's where the puddle of water. And then the road cracked right in the middle all the way toward the end. But then the road turned to Fletcher Street, that intersection there, there's a big, really damage, and catch a lot of, it catch a lot of the water there. There's a big puddle there. If you make the left turn onto Fletcher Street or Rockdale Ave, it's a one-way street.
So, when we do, there is catch basin in the middle right now. So, we're going to lower that catch basins.
Right.
And drop that gray, reset the gray, so you can catch the water in the middle.
Right.
That's the one of the reason the roadway is splitting, because the catch basin is set higher than the roadway itself, so it's the water doesn't get into it. So, we're going to reset that to a lower grade, so the water will channel through it.
Right. But the resident want me to let you know that go toward, almost to the end of it, and before you make a left turn, there's a lot of damage in that section there.
End of the end.
Yes.
Yes, we are doing localized paving on that location, in that spot location, so that we can treat that pavement area.
I just want to point it out so that they watch it at home, they understand that it is being taken care of.
It is. That portion of the area is being added to the localized paving list.
Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Rock. Could we just add this to the seam crack ceiling list also? Because if the seams in the reverse, it makes sense.
That is the plan.
Thank you.
Motion Response G, Yard Waste Collection Status, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Scott.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for working with Waste Management to try to get this back on a timely pickup schedule. If there's short staffing, they're looking to hire. I hope the Career Center is aware of that, because, I mean, that could be a great opportunity for people that might be looking for employment. And also, I'm thankful that you're beginning to explore at least the creation of a yard waste drop-off site, and I'm hopeful that we could find a feasible option in the community. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Janess.
Thank you. Just like to echo Counselor Robinson's thanks for this. I think it's, we're going in the right direction here. But one thing I didn't see in the motion response that I think just makes sense is, could we just say right now for anyone who's listening or watching, if you have waste that hasn't been picked up and you're struggling with it, I know there's a lot of frustration out there, what should people do if they're stuck right now?
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If yard waste is missed, they should call DPW. Chris Sullivan and his guys can get it to Waste Management and get it on the list. I feel like we, they had a rough couple of weeks, and they've been catching up. Last week, I think they were all caught up by Friday. But if anybody's yard waste is missed, they should definitely call DPW.
Thank you.
Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rock. Through you to Assistant City Manager, Machado. Two years ago, we went over the same thing. Last year, same thing at this time. These companies should understand that this is the peak, and this is when we have to load up to get these things done. Is there a plan going forward in the new contract that will hold people accountable if after a certain amount of days it isn't picked up, that we can hold somebody responsible for it? If CFO Baldwin or someone could comment on that. Is it something we're looking towards? Because it seems like it's building a patent, or has been a patent.
Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are very good suggestions and something that we're looking at enhancing in the new contract. We're in, you know, approaching the time to be in negotiations for a successor contract. Right now, there is particular language on exactly how many in a block face have to be missed in order for us to issue violations. So, having that lesson learned from this current contract, I think we have some enhancements that we're going to be looking for based on the input from the council and from the community, and those are changes we're going to need to see in the next contract.
Some of the, you know, because it's almost sole source, because there's only so many companies that can bid for this, by putting this in is just going to increase the cost on the other end, and then they're going to make it back either way. I mean, if we're being honest across the table, we all know that this is what companies do to you. If they see something, okay, yeah, this many times at this time of year, I'll be charged this, so I'll just jack up the price on the backside. So, I just would caution that, you know, we don't get too restrictive, because you know what happens on the other side, we'll be paying for it without it even happening. Thank you.
Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Understanding the service has been below average at best. Under the contract that we have right now, what are the liquidated damages on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis?
Good. Shaw.
I don't have that information in front of me, but we did issue a fine last week to Waste Management because of the poor performance. We can, I can get you a report of what triggers the actual fine, but we did issue a fine last Monday.
I guess what I'm asking is, you know, obviously, if I'm a company, I don't want to get hit with liquidated damages. Have they thought of maybe doing a Saturday or a Sunday date to pick up trash and recycling at this point?
They usually do catch up on Saturday.
They do.
Yeah. But that two-week stretch where they really struggled, even the Saturday, wasn't helping. They did do better last week, but they usually use that Saturday to catch up.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Mr. Mayor, may I move the 6.3 motion to have?
We all had a discussion on the yard waste. Yes. Counselor Baldwin, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add for the public watching that the phone number to call for DPW if there are issues with solid waste and recycling. There's a couple of ways to contact the city. Mr. Machado mentioned that reaching out to us is the best way to resolve those issues. 978-674-4309 is the number to call for the Solid Waste and Recycling Office. But we do encourage residents to use the website as well, if they're capable, to submit missed pickups or any issues of that nature, and DPW will handle those as they come in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The phone number is 978-674-4309. Thank you. Motion by Counselor Leahy, got something to say?
Sure, just a quick question. I missed the first part. So, they're supposed to be on time, but they're behind today now for the trash pickup?
Sure, Shaw.
Supposed to be on time, right, they said, except for?
Yeah, I didn't see today's report. I get a report every day of how far they are behind, if any. I didn't see today's report, but as of last week, they were all caught up by that Saturday.
I mean, I thought they were supposed to be in Belvedere today, weren't they?
No, today was a holiday, so everything was, this was a holiday schedule, so Belvedere is tomorrow.
All right. I thought I read on the website, it said Monday's the holiday and the rest of the week is regular schedule, so, okay.
Motion by Counselor Yem takes 6.3 out of order, seconded by Counselor Robinson. 6.3 is Communication, Appointment of Jaclyn Cole to the Veterans Commission. The motion to adopt by Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Roll call.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchea.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Eleven years.
Ms. Cole.
Ms. Cole.
Thank you for telling your service. Say your words.
Thank you, Jaclyn Cole, Seven Born Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. It would have been quite embarrassing for me, having been here, if you guys had have voted me down, so thank you very much. I didn't realize that was going to be live. And thank everyone for, who was involved in the selection process, especially Counselor Yem, for encouraging me to apply for this position. So, thank you so much. Just so you all know, I was active duty 10 years in the United States Air Force, 12 years Reserve, and served in Afghanistan. And I absolutely come from a family of military individuals, serving in the Army and the Air Force. I did meet one of, I believe, the most senior members of this current commission. I'm not sure, but it seems like I'm in the middle generation, so I'm hoping that with all of our powers combined, we can ensure that all of the veterans in Lowell are able to come together and are able to have some sort of repository for us to be able to share information and help our veterans. Because right now, I'm not even sure if we're walking by and we know who they are, and they may require assistance, or they may just require a hello. So, thank you for having me on this commission, and once I find out what my roles and responsibilities are, I'll be sure to fulfill them.
Thank you for your service.
Mr. Mayor, if I may say, if you would.
Yeah, time of honor. Counselor Getchea. Go ahead, Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rock. If anybody would have voted against this, I think we would have had major problems after reading the 10-page resume that's here. I don't think in the history of being here, I've seen 10 pages as a resume, and someone might have missed on page eight, the $500 million company that you helped develop. So, I just wanted to say thank you for donating your time to the city, and it will be a pleasure to have you onboard.
Counselor Dakota. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's more like twisting her arm to get involved, because I met her, we honor her in a banner, so with her background and services to our country, want to thank you. And with your involvement, I'm hoping that we will then attract younger veterans who are here, who served the same time with you in Iraq, Afghanistan, who are here now. But because, you know, they may not feel comfortable with different generational differences, so with you on as a commissioner, one of the commissioner, you know, maybe we can bridge that gap and then bring more younger veterans and get involved. Thank you again for your service to the country and your time to volunteer on the commission. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am so honored to know Jaclyn. The resume was unbelievable. I thought I was reading a book. This is unbelievable, and I want to thank you so much for volunteering, and thank you for your service. You're a credit to all women. I'm so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, back to motion responses. H, Leaf Removal Operations, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you to all that are involved on this report. Couple things. I mean, we've done this over and over. It's, if we're giving up to do leaf removal in the spring, beginning in March, then what are we doing in the fall, when the leaves are falling? We got ball fields and everything else in the spring, that should be prioritized. And I think if you look around, you're seeing some of the drawbacks of doing that. It's like starting to tune up your lawn mowers in the spring when you need them. So, I think we're going to have to look forward to better planning on this, because it does become a heavy lift when you're doing heavy fall cleanups in the spring, because it's taking away from everything else that should be getting done in the spring, but thank you.
Motion Response A, Commercial to Residential Conversion, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, and it's very informative. I do realize that we've been changing some zoning and different things to try to help streamline processes of creating more housing, the MBTA, all these different initiatives that the council has kind of stepped up and worked on. I just, I don't see, granted, we're not a city the size of like a Chicago or a Houston, but I don't see why, overall, it says at this time, the recommendation is not to engage in a program. If we have commercial space sitting empty, vacant, why wouldn't we try to engage and try to incentivize people that might be sitting on it, utilizing as it a tax write-off or whatever they're doing, to convert that into more residential without? I mean, I think that's kind of a better option than looking to construct or draw development if we have buildings that need repurposing. So, that's the only thing that I was a little unclear on, but again, this isn't my wheelhouse, and I respect the recommendation. Thank you.
Ms. Bayaz Rose.
Thank you. So, the assessor talked to folks in Boston about the program and how it's been working there, and we looked online to understand what other communities are doing, and it seems that the programs, this type of program has been most successful in communities that have large-scale buildings that have floor plates that are like easy to renovate to housing, but for, you know, either a financing gap or something like that. And so, when we were taking stock of the buildings that we have available, primarily in downtown, for example, some of the upper stories, the issue hasn't been, we have not historically heard from people, you know, I'm desperate to renovate my building, but I, you know, I can't quite make it to finance it in this particular way. And so, we, at this time, feel like we'll have more success utilizing a combination of things. One, the new zoning that this council has passed, both the DMU and the MBTA, but also encouraging people to be more proactive with their space, and when possible, utilizing the commercial vacancy registration program also passed by this council. At this time, we don't, we haven't heard that it's really a lack of incentive that's motivating people. And so, we are trying to sort of give ourselves a little bit more time to try to push through on some of these things that we've been seeing. We do have Hilldrift, the Hilldrift Building is an example of a property that sat for a really long time, and it was, it took a transition of ownership to get it to what will be 50 units of new housing. And so, we kind of think that if we can utilize the commercial vacancy storefront program, that may that may encourage some of that ownership transition, which actually has been the missing link, I think, in a lot of buildings. But certainly, we will keep our eyes on this program and are, have been very proactive in adopting a number of programs to try to incentivize people to do redevelopment. It's just at this time, we think that there are some things on the table that might just help us move these things forward without adopting a new program, just right now.
Thank you very much for that. And I mean, it seems almost like, and it sounds like DPD is, kind of has the ear to the street on what's working for our community, and I appreciate that. What's your thoughts on maybe going to some of these building owners and asking them? Just maybe a roundtable discussion, lunch or something, and say, "What would it take to get you to really consider development on the upper floors?" Is it the elevators? Like, I believe it was Mayor Rock put a motion on quite some time ago. Would it be a matter of some kind of funding mechanism? Like, let's get their input as to how do we get you interested, and what's it gonna take to get you over that hurdle to try to see if we can spur some of this? Because every time I walk down Middle Street, for example, I hate to look up, because we have how many stories of vacant space that we don't even know its shape it's really in, because it's, for whatever reason, it's not developed. So, I appreciate it, though. Thank you.
I've been past 7 o'clock. We're back to Section 4 Utility Public Hearing, 4.1. Teleport Communications, D/B/A, AT&amp;T. Request installation of underground conduit at University Avenue and Riverside Street. Need a motion to refer to the wiring inspector for report and recommendation. First need to open the hearing for those in favor. In favor, in favor. Report's convenience closed. All opposed? Opposed, opposed. Motion being as closed. Motion by Council Getchia, send to the wiring inspector for report recommendation, seconded by Council Dakota. Roll call, new clerk? All right. All in favor say aye, opposed, passes. Back to motion responses. J, baseball tournament in Lashaw Park, Councils Robinson and Getchia.
Thank you. It's encouraging to see we're gonna be able to utilize that space. I think it's great. We've done it before in the past, and I think it was a success, and I'm looking forward to this event. I think inviting everyone in, letting people play in that field, in that stadium, it's, I mean, we all saw smiles ear to ear on all the family and friends that watched the kids play, so thank you for this.
All set, Council Getchia? Council Yehm?
Just want to say thank you for the report, and particularly by having mentioned also Roberto Clemente League as well, so that this way, they don't feel left out. I appreciate them at that, you know. Thank you so much for the report.
6.2 Information Report. Petition Response, Handicap Park in 52824. Who wants that one, Mr. Manager? Anybody? All set? Council Leahy?
Sure, through you to the managers. So, was there one there before, and they're saying they can't replace it? Or it looks like there's already one there, it needs to be replaced, so why, how did we get one there in the first place, and how do we get this person a handicap sign?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Council, when we did find out, we probably didn't look to see if it was a public or private street. So, if it be in a private street, LHA would have the ability to erect that, put that up.
All right. So, in the report, it doesn't really say. Did you relay that to them, then, to tell them to request it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. No, it just looks like we just said, "Sorry." Yeah, all right. As long as we told them how to do it. Thank you.
Votes from the City Manager, 7.1. Vote to approve exemption of Michaela Pukulon, Pukulon, sorry, Master General Law, Section 268A, Section 20. Roll the full reading. Second reading by title. Vote approving the exemption of Michaela Pukulon from the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20. Need a motion to adopt by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Janess. Council Getchia?
Through you to the manager, Golden. I just want to make people aware that we did go out and look for people to do this, but we had nobody return an application, right? So, this is the way we solve this issue?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Yes, this is how we're solving this issue for the time being. We have two of our chefs that are having some surgery on some knees and things of that nature, so they're just trying to, we're trying to help out and fill out through the weekends, and this is the best way we thought we could do that. And we really want to thank, obviously, the school department for working with us and helping us to find Michaela, as well as Aramok.
I just didn't want the public to think that we didn't go out and solicit people to apply for this position and get people...
We had plenty of phone calls that were going out, I think, between all 11 of these councilors, knowing cooks and everything else, but we're very happy that this could be filled in a, you know, in a time, for the time being. It's not something that's gonna be a permanent piece.
Because I think for most of us, we take this serious, putting these waivers through to give people two jobs when there may be others, and thank you.
Roll call.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yehm?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Eight orders for the City Manager, order for a 68-day trial. We have the full reading. Second reading by title. Pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning Section 266-6 thereof entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. A motion to adopt by Council Yehm, seconded by Council Robinson. Roll call.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yehm?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Section 9, 9.1. Senior Citizens Subcommittee for May 23, 2024. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The senior subcommittee met at 1:00 on May 23. Present was myself, Council Dakota, Council Getchia, Kim Gagnon, the Director of the Senior Center was there, Lisa Golden, the Director of Health and Human Services, John Machado, the Assistant City Manager was there, Bell Dominguez, DEI Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and Council Chow was there as well. We opened up the discussion. Ken Harkins spoke first. He commented on recent vent cleaning and general cleaning, indicating the success, and further noted that the conditions of the property needs to be maintained, and I found that to be very true. We need to keep maintaining that facility, or it'll be in disrepair. Council Getchia noted that any issues can be discussed in this forum. They thought that it only was pertaining to the senior center, but we let it, well, he, Council Getchia, let it be known that if you have any issues in your neighborhood or with your, with the city in general, it's about everybody's problems, not just the senior center. And a resident of Boarding House Park commented on the graffiti present on the walls along the river and suggested that it be cleaned, and they also suggested that it could be used for an artist mural under some guidelines, but Council Dakota questioned the location being along the river, maybe because you really wouldn't see it, only those that are walking, and all that effort would go into it, but I don't want to interpret his thoughts. But anyway, he said that the city council should act on the concerns of the residents. Council Getchia lauded the efforts of the city manager and his staff in addressing all those issues. Council Getchia commented on the upkeep of the senior center. We heard from Maxine Fargas. She attended the meeting, and she addressed the body concerning the current art programs for the seniors, and it would be great if we could increase the funding for fiscal year '26 to meet the needs of the facility in the future. Council Dakota commented on using grant money wisely. Council Getchia commented on the roles of the council in budgeting, and suggested that early requests should be done and not to undersell your needs to the manager. Ms. Gagnon outlined her recent budget process and the changes being done moving forward. Council Dakota noted the need for more resources for the senior center. Council Getchia indicated that there is passion for success in this building. Maxine also described a recent art show put on by the seniors and its success. Assistant City Manager, Mr. Machado, responded to the needs for a bus driver at the facility and took suggestions that any employment ad should be just for a driver with no other position indicated. So, that was the report of progress. We will meet, I believe, once a month, and if any of my colleagues... And I'm not gonna fool anybody, I kind of got deathly, deathly sick from the heat, and I had to leave, so I'm kind of like winging it. So, if any of my colleagues have anything further to say, I would just appreciate hearing from them. Thank you.
Council Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the chairperson, Mercia mentioned, I do like the once-a-month going to visit them. I think they really appreciated that, and let's just make sure it's just not on a bingo day, okay?
Oh, Wednesday is bingo day.
Okay.
That's why we met Thursday afternoon at 1:00.
They were all upstairs, right?
Yeah, they were upstairs playing bingo. I don't understand...
We gotta pick a non-bingo day, then.
Well, maybe we should have it upstairs and say, "This is the bingo senior subcommittee."
You'll stop playing. Me and Eric can't do the meeting without you.
Council Getchia?
If Council Dakota can learn pool or 45s, he can go upstairs, we can hold the meeting up there.
Great. Need a motion to accept the report of progress by Council Noon, seconded by Council Leahy. All in favor say aye. Motion passes, 9.2. Council Mercia, tonight or next week?
No, I'll do it now.
9.2. Parks Recreation Subcommittee, May 28, 2024. Chairwoman, Mercia.
Thank you. We met this evening at 5:30. The Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, present was Kiki Rudy, member of the Board of Parks, Thomas Conter, member of the Board of Parks, Peter Fataconti, Program Director and Planning of Recreation Department, Hardi, Board of Parks member, and Corey Robinson, Councilor Robinson was there as well. It was a very nice, fulfilling meeting, although I will say that we first met with the Board of Parks on February 6 to discuss the policy, the Board of Parks Policy Handbook. There was really nothing to go by to guide them, so they looked it over. We gave them, like, since February to come back, to put something together, of which they did. Council Dakota, I mean, I'm sorry, Council Getchia talked about how to request a permit on page 3. Anyone requesting to use the parks, the fields, and it says, "Start by selecting a desired location." Council Getchia said, "Let us say this. Start by selecting facilities and park to be the desired location." To add that in there after selecting, and that's what we agreed on. That was the first change to what we were presented. Then on page 9 was the payments are due prior to the start date of the permit. If a request falls short of the two weeks' deadline, the permit must be paid in full after the board meeting by the end of the following business day. That was not in place, so that's a policy that is in place. Next, on the cancellation policy, it says issued permits are generally not refunded in the event of a cancellation by the request. Council Getchia made it a point, if we could take the word generally and say issued permits are not refunded in the event of a cancellation by the request, or I know further down the line, it kind of makes up for extreme emergencies when you can do that. There were many, well, really not that many, but there were fee policy changes. There were fees and payment deadlines and changes. Council Robinson talked about dogs running around the fields. That, we need more enforcement on our parks. People are golfing on our parks. People are sleeping in the parks at Father Maguire Park, and they're sleeping in the area where the children's gym equipment, playground equipment is, and it isn't right for when kids come and see someone sleeping there. So, there were many, many things that we discussed. Now, we looked at, I don't mean we, meaning me, but the Board of Parks looked comparable to other communities such as Worcester and different other places, to see what they charge, and they charged for youth leagues. We do not do that. We are not charging for youth leagues. And I want to just interject here right now, and I've said this at the subcommittee meeting, that we have people in this city that we honor all the time, but we never really honor those that are coaches and mentors are everywhere, and we wonder, how can we keep these kids occupied and out of trouble? These are the things that the coaches do. They mentor them, they keep them busy, they teach them values. They probably don't even know that they're learning how to cooperate, how to get along with people, how to, you know, reason and, you know, strategize to make your next move on a football team or a baseball team, how to have compassion and how to get along. It's really very important, and I laud all the coaches for all that they put into shaping our future leaders in the city of Lowell, that are young children right now, keep them out of trouble so that they idle hands as the devil's workshop, but not when you're a coach and you mentor all these kids. So, I just had to throw that in there. I have so much to say, and I will say that one thing that I am going to say is about the MIAA. There's the new fee structure, and MIAA has a sports event at Colley Memorial Stadium. It's a dollar per ticket. None of the MIAA people pay it, but when they want our money, they certainly know how to find us, and we certainly pay, but they don't pay even a dollar. I had to say that because that bugs me, but the Board of Parks requested a meeting with the key people that are responsible for the different parks to see if they could add this special policy about the keys. So, people take a permit for a field, and a certain person has a key. If they're not there, then nobody uses the bathroom, and that's a very important issue that they wanted to discuss. I just want to say that the fees, some of them were changed. I just want to say that a motion was made, seconded by Eric Getchia. We're gonna take the Board of Parks Policy Handbook, and we're gonna give it to you, Corey, Mr. City Solicitor, so that you could look into the basic form of it, so that it meets all the requirements to make it a working document. Not that it'll be finalized, but we needed some expert legal opinion as well, and there's more issues that we're gonna discuss at a later date, so this wasn't the end of that meeting. It's a report of progress to what can happen, but there are some changes we'd like to just have you look it over. Maybe where we put something in it that isn't legal or whatever, you can just take a look at that. But it's nice to have something that says, gee, I'm a member of the Board of Parks, what are the, what is the policy? Where's the handbook? Well, now, we, some objected to probably having it, but we have a document in place that would be a guide as to what we're asking for. So, that's a report of progress, and that's the motion, and thank you very much. If any of my colleagues want to add anything to that?
Pretty excellent report, Council Mercia.
Well, thank you.
I'd like to second that motion, because she made a motion to submit the handbook to the solicitor.
Right, and it was seconded by Council Getchia. Do we want to...
It was passed on the Subcommittee?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, good to go.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the clerk. Do we need to take a roll call on the motion that was at the...
You wouldn't, Counsel. Just a motion to accept and adopt the report.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make sure the solicitor gets the referral.
Ten petitions, 10.1, two property damage claims. Motion to refer to the Law Department for a report and recommendation by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Getche. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Announcements? Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to mention tomorrow night is Game 5 of the PWHL Championship Series. It'll be here at the Saugus. The game's sold out, so we expect a pretty, or the team expects a pretty good crowd. I look forward to attending. It's been a great season for the team, and I look forward to hopefully having them in here to congratulate them on a championship. So best of luck to them. I will say that so far this year, there have been 14 PWHL games over at the Saugus Center, and over 53,000 people have come to attend games during that stretch. So it's been, it's been a pretty amazing first season across the league. And for Lowell to be playing a part of it, and for, to have the eyes of the women's hockey world on the city of Lowell tomorrow is pretty cool, and I'm glad we get to see it. Thank you.
Best of luck tomorrow night. Anything else? Council Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the entire Lowell City Council, and then also this administration, we want to wish CFO Connor Baldwin a happy, healthy, enjoy your birthday. That's tomorrow.
All right. Motion to adjourn by Council Yem, seconded by Council Scott. Good night.